Good evening and welcome to the September 10th Regular Meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agendas presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please be placed in silent mode or turned off. And for items that are not public hearings, I will provide an opportunity for public comment. Kathy, are you doing the roll call? Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Campan? Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shepke?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
All right, item number two, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
As prepared, sir.
All right. Second.
It's fine.
By Mr. Stratt.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Item number three, approval of the minutes from our August 27, 2013 Special Study Meeting. Any questions, comments? Mr. Edmonds?
I would just move to approve as published.
All second.
Mr. Krent?
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Item four, public comments for items not on the current agenda. Seeing no one, move on to our first item for the night, Preliminary Site Plan Review. File number SP979A, Proposed Gallery of Troy Phase Two, North Side of Big Beaver, between Wilshire and I-75, Section 21, Currently Zone BB, Big Beaver District. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, first off, I want to, Mr. Savadon apologizes for not being able to make it tonight. He had a family issue he had to deal with, so I'm filling in his role tonight. The only item for consideration tonight by the Planning Commission is a site plan for Phase Two of the Galleria project on Big Beaver and Wilshire. If the Planning Commission will remember, Phase One, which included those three buildings that front on Big Beaver, was approved approximately six months ago on the front of that site. Phase Two is going to be located directly behind Phase One, adjacent to Wilshire, and this includes two hotels. One is a 122-four-story Hampton Inn, and the second hotel is a 114-room, five-story Hilton Garden Inn. The Hampton Inn is located adjacent to Wilshire, and the Hilton Garden is located in the back of the site, adjacent to I-75. Initially, we had met with the applicant in March or April and talked to them about their site plan and site plan issues. At that time, we did provide some recommendations for the applicant to consider. Just want to quickly go over these and address these. The first was, we talked about orienting one hotel adjacent to Big Beaver to create a backdrop to Phase One, as well as a visual element from Big Beaver itself. Second item we discussed was placing the Hilton Garden along Wilshire and moving the Hampton Inn to the I-75 site. The Hilton Garden has a little more architectural features and higher quality materials, and so that should be more prominent on the site. The second was moving the hotels closer to Wilshire themselves. The other item for consideration was to incorporate ground floor retail into the hotel buildings. The next item was to create a distinctive entrance off of Wilshire. Next item was to reconfigure the median breaks on Wilshire as necessary to provide better site access and circulation. We also recommend the applicant incorporate greater pedestrian connections throughout the site, including continuing the pedestrian spine that runs through Phase One. And the last one is to consolidate and share parking. We do note that the applicant did address some of these concerns, specifically moving the building closer to Wilshire, incorporation of the pedestrian spine from Phase One, as well as sharing parking. However, there were some other site planning issues that we did raise that the applicant did not address in their recent bills, so we do ask the applicant to try to walk us through tonight how they came up with the site layout that they did choose for this particular location. In regards to the site plan that was submitted in our review, we do note that they meet most of the bulk and setback requirements of the Form Based District. The major issues are the placement of the Hampton Inn is not located, at least one corner of it is not located within the 30-foot build-to line, maximum setback line that the Planning Commission is able to approve. In addition, the applicant needs to provide an open space calculation to ensure that no more than 15% of the site is exceeded. Access to the site is provided off of shared access that's going to be shared with Phase One, as well as a secondary access off of the private drive that serves Magna Development. We do note that we did not receive any documentation from the applicant that Magna has agreed to allow them to use this drive, and so they need to provide that if they are actually, in fact, going to use that drive. If they are not able to secure an agreement with Magna to use that private drive, a secondary access point will need to be located somewhere along Wilshire to accommodate site access and circulation. As noted, the applicant has provided the pedestrian spine. We do encourage it, and we do strongly support the pedestrian attempts the applicant has made for this site point and do applaud them for that. In regards to the floor plans and elevation, they have submitted full floor plans and elevations. We do note that the floor plans that were submitted are pretty much the standard floor plans that you'll see, standard floor plans and elevation that you'll see for the Hampton Inn and Hilton Garden. We note this is a highly visible site on Big Beaver. Developments on Big Beaver are held to a higher standard as outlined in the design guidelines, as well as the zoning ordinance and master plan. In your packet, we did include photographs of other Hampton Inn and Hilton sites that do implore a little more architectural detail and ground story activation. Specifically in concern in regards to the application, the applicant's supplemental for these elevations, we do note that the Hampton Inn elevation along Wilshire does not meet the ordinance requirements of ground story activation. And we do also note that the rear and the side elevations for both hotels, which is the ones at front on Wilshire and the ones at front on Big Beaver, really are rather lack the architectural detail that we would hope to see on Big Beaver, and they really should incorporate greater architectural details. So in summary, conceptually, we do support the plan. We support the addition of two hotels on the site. However, we do have issues and concerns regarding the site plan layout and some of the architectural details that were submitted. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Did I just not find it in my package, or did the packages, in fact, not include elevations for the Hampton Inn? Everything I see is branded for the other hotel.
I don't know it was included in your packet. Hampton Inn was included in my review, or my reviews that I undertook, so...
It was in your review, but I don't believe it was in the agenda packet. Because I'm concerned about that because of its proximity to Wilshire. It would be nice to know what the box is going to look like before we approve it.
I don't know it was included in your packet. All I can tell you is the plans I reviewed, it was included, and we did have concerns about it. So you're right, it should be reviewed by the Planning Commission.
I don't think it's in tonight's package either. I don't see it.
Only the one in his report.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlisle? Yes, Mr. Shepke. Thank you.
Yeah, there's one question looking at the Princeton ad today that kind of struck me, and it said the runoff, parking lot and building runoff, it says it's going to be directed to the Magna detention. And there seemed to be a permission lacking with another item from Magna, so I was wondering, has this been approved by engineering and...
No, engineering has not reviewed the stormwater management at this point. And you're correct, if they are going to run off into Magna, there needs to be some sort of agreement with that property owner as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Stratt.
In response to that, maybe the engineering had actually sized that to accommodate any future development, so it could be a part of that, so we don't know that at this point, though. You're right, maybe we should have it in photo. We should know that. Maybe they can inform us of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Carlisle?
I have the elevations in my hand right here. I can hand them out, or if the applicant has actually boards, he can show them. It's up to the Planning Commission if they want to see the elevations for the Hampton.
Does, do you have elevations?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Would you like to step forward and sign in, tell us your name, and give us your presentation?
Your pen?
Thank you, my name is Scott Bowers with Bowers and Associates Architects.
Okay, so we have several. We did read Mr. Carlisle's report.
We did update our elevations to take into consideration Wilshire and not only the hotel itself, but material levels that we'd like to see. This one happens to be the one that's up on Wilshire is the Hampton Inn. We have a mixture of split face, precast stone, brick, and ephes on the top, which is only on the top, and then fields or ledge stone at the entrance ways. Here's a sample of the materials that we're proposing for the building. It is a four-story building. And in the back, along the road itself at our entryway, we added a new entrance feature with glass and doorways and projected out past the building. As well as, we added larger fenestration into the pool areas, the meeting rooms, the fitness areas, but the, on the south end of the building, it's basically rooms, so we can't do anything for, and I can pass this around, so everyone can look at it. I can't open those rooms up, not any larger. Here's a rendering that we picked out, plus along Wilshire due to the projection and our patio that we are proposing at this end of the building. Also see the front of the Hilton Garden Inn, and how these two relate, as well as the spine and our architectural features that attach the new retail and restaurant complex with the hotels. And again, you can get a look at the...
Mr. Bauer, I have a question for you on this elevation. You're calling them front and rear. Which is the Wilshire side? Is that...
The bottom.
So the rear elevation is the Wilshire?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, we did, we explored some more renderings, showed these different elevations. Here's what it would look like off of Wilshire, and then this is what it would look like from 75, as well as if you were sitting on Big Beaver, looking through one of the alleyways of the Hilton buildings, you can see one of the hotels in the backdrop. Pass this around, of course.
Why did I do anything on the backside, I wonder? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
The Hilton Garden Inn, in the position that it is, we like where it is because it does have a larger lobby and basically service area for the hotel. It is, again, out of materials. Oops, one fell off.
Quality construction.
We have precast stone on the base, brick, limestone. We have a grayish-green metal roof over the pavilion. Gives it an architectural feature that wasn't in the plans that you originally saw. And then glass fenestration at the top of that. And then Hilton Garden Inn itself is brick, precast, stone, and ephes at the top floors. And we do raise up the brick pattern up over some rooms all the way up to the fourth floor, and then drop it down just to give some variation in the building. Again, we've opened up the sides in the front, towards the parking lot, towards Wilshire. The back is primarily rooms again, and then there's service corridor or service area that's in the back where we have our dumpster and our kitchen area, which would be this one towards 75.
Very nicely done, I think.
One of the reasons why we kept the buildings in the position they were is that we can't actually get either one of those across the property and have the pedestrian that indoor easy access, maybe around the buildings, when we run in parallel with Big Beaver and really divide the parking and pedestrian area in half. Discussing that with Hilton.
Thanks.
They do agree that this was the layout that would work best for the operations and our customer traffic. And again, we didn't want to end up dividing up that parking lot because we do share parking to where we had a majority of the parking on one side of one building and less on the other side.
What?
Yeah, be careful of the one panel.
You have insurance, right? You have insurance, right?
I was holding over my car, and this guy said, "Don't you have..."
Absolutely. Do you have one, Mr. Stratt?
Yeah.
How did you get them to deviate from the traditional crap that they normally have?
Excuse me?
That was how you really feel.
My name is from the grant. I went to, with a developer down into Indiana, and I met him, and I told him, basically, we have a higher standard building program here, and the site is going to require different materials and different system on the building. And he gave us the grant, so we could work on it, and we did it.
Very nicely done. That's what I'm complimenting you on it. I think working with a chain like that, they sometimes put some restrictions on you that you don't have the freedom. But you've managed to still maintain some of the concepts that they originally have, but still do it in a nice manner. I'm pleased with what I saw.
Thank you. I think you did take us to go down there and actually talk them through what we had going on.
Well, good for you. And I'm glad you said that we're kind of particular up here.
Yeah, we do that going in.
Now, now I want to know where the bioswales are.
We do have stormwater management, and the question that Mr. Shepke had raised related to stormwater management. It is underground detention system like Phase One had. It discharges into an existing county drain. Its name is the Lane Drain. There's direct connections into that. None of the stormwater will go into the system for Magna. We're standing alone by itself. When Magna had this property under control, they were going to expand and create their own basin, essentially under the footprint where the hotels being proposed currently. But we're going to do everything with underground detention.
I saw the drawing on that, and I was just wondering how much of that was going into the retention pond, but none of it's going in there.
None of it's going to go into the detention pond. The site is bisected by the Lane Drain. It's a 68-inch pipe, so we can't get across it. That's why there's two different systems, we're seeing.
Yeah, I see the massive area that you have, but I was just wondering, what are you doing with stormwater? As far as, are you doing any retention on that, that you can actually, stormwater management?
Well, we're doing underground detention. We're pre-treating.
No, that's not what I was asking. The stormwater management I meant was deterring the water from going into your retention area. You're doing bioswales? You doing anything?
Yeah, on this phase of the project, we are not doing bioswales.
Okay.
The other side of the project, we had a little more latitude where we could make it work undecided.
Well, it seemed like you had an opportunity in that corridor that you were, that connecting link, that you could possibly do something along those lines, but that's immaterial, really. Right now, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing.
Thank you.
Next time.
I have a question for Mr. Carlisle. When we get there. Please. Mr. Carlisle, you said something about the Hampton Inn property not meeting the maximum 30-foot setback. Is that going to be a showstopper for us? Because I think this, I think what we've seen tonight is something that I really didn't think we'd ever see on that property, to be perfectly honest. I thought Phase One would be built, and Phase Two never would be.
Not so soon.
The ordinance is written so that the maximum modification to that 10-foot build-to line is 30 feet. A corner of the building is 42 feet, so the Planning Commission does not have the latitude to grant that additional 12 feet of relief. This either is an issue that needs to go to the zoning board of appeals, or the applicant needs to shift the building at least 10 feet closer on that corner footprint.
But that requires that they design a completely unique building because the road's curved. It's really not their fault that the road's curved.
That would be an argument to make for the zoning board of appeals for a particular second set of circumstances.
This is for the developer, the petitioner. My question is, did you get permission to use that drive that Magna has to utilize that drive into their property? Has there anything formally written up or drawn up between you and Magna? I know it's been discussed, but... The whole while where we were talking about that, taking a look at, I know that it was discussed with the developer before when we went back here, but we were also talking about the detention pond. I don't have that with us, but I can easily bring another one out and reconnect back over here or down this way and out. There is that room because that road curves, and there's a lot of landscape area, which we'd rather leave landscaped, but we can bring it back out if this can't be obtained.
Mr. Hudson, did you have a question?
Yeah, it wasn't a question, maybe a comment, maybe from Mr. Bowers. The elevations we've seen are nice. They look like about every other Holiday Inter Hampton or Holiday Gardens.
Hilton Gardens.
Hilton Gardens, all over the country. And I thought one of the Big Beaver District's suggestions was to have something which showed some imagination in design and elevations. And in our packet, I presume you've seen them, we had four illustrations of other buildings that the Hampton Gardens have used. And I like, especially one of them, it's a nine-story. I know you're not doing nine stories, but are you married to these elevations? Because I'd like to see a little more imagination used if we're putting in these hotels.
Actually, these are quite deviated from standard brand hotel elevations. The Hilton Garden Inn, I think that you're looking at, was an urban, one with the round on the end.
Around the front, yes.
They, we went, like I said, we went down to Indiana and discussed this with Hilton. And there are rare cases anymore where they'll do something like this, and especially on a, in an area like Troy, where they have, we have the room around it, and it's not on a city block. And they actually are enamored and totally in love with their pavilion, and we got the absolute, "No, you can't redo that pavilion." We did put a metal roof on it, and we did up it a little bit to give it a lot more character, and we added a lot more glass.
Yeah, we got some more fenestrations on there, but it still looks like the same old log.
They're all going to look similar as a Hilton Garden Inn or a Hampton would. The Hampton especially, we did a lot of work on that one because they still have those curved top cornice pieces that just looked like something out of the '50s to me, and it was, we've gone a long way with that, as well as putting a lot more glass back into that. Matter of fact, we redid the whole pool area and inserted it in in such a way we could add a ton of glass, especially on that side, and get it out with a big, open patio. And that was something that took a lot of discussion as well. But I think it does well for Wilshire and for our hotel.
Okay, once your hands are tied, your hands are tied.
I think we did pretty good to get to the point where we got with this print.
Mr. Stratt, did you have another question?
Your main entrance, as you see it to the entire complex, where do you see that
I would say that this would be a slightly leaning entrance.
Opposed to the one that's to the north?
Mr. Bowers, could you just stand back so we all could benefit from your description?
I don't know what the linear footage there is. It's quite a ways, 400, 500 feet. Even if we put one here, it's still 400, 500 feet.
Yeah.
Mr. Charbonne? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. At your main entrance, don't see anything on your drawing, or I don't believe I saw it on the plan, for any ground signage that it's the entrance for the hotel? Is that being proposed?
We are going to come back and propose that, yes. We'd like to have a cohesive package between the two building sets, or three.
All set. Mr. Edmonds? I just wanted to see, where is this 12 feet? Can you point it out where the, it's out of compliance with our...
Here.
Right there?
We followed this line along Wilshire, and then Wilshire starts curving back, and then be this point right here.
So you'd have to move the building 12 foot forward?
We either have to bend it or break it, or kind of tweak it. We've tweaked it in there a couple times because it's on that tangent, so either way, one or two inches are going to be off. So what we took is, this being all the way, it's compliant up to where the pool is, and then we added this feature outside that brought it closer to the road and more pedestrian.
Are we allowed to, are we allowed to include that feature outside?
I'm sorry?
Are we allowed to include that feature outside that they say they brought it up closer to the road? Which is, it looks like landscaping or something back out in front there. What is it, a patio or something?
There's a patio with a, that's right, a corner, so you can see.
Okay.
Right here.
All right. But we're not allowed to include that, according to the ordinance?
Well, we did include, for the McDonald's site that came in a few months ago, we included a patio that was more of a permanent feature with a permanent retain, well, screen. a patio that was more of a permanent feature with a permanent retain, well, screen new wall as part of their building and that was included. So I think we can, we could potentially work with the applicant to ensure that that meets the ordinance requirements of what that patio space is going to be.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, did you have another question?
No, I was just going to make a comment that I think the, the west side, for lack of a better term, of the Hampton Inn is a nice addition to the Wilshire Drive. It gives us mass, but it doesn't give us a great deal of activity. Kind of makes the hotel, at least it's not a parking lot. And I would personally like to see some way that we can approve it, but if not, I think that they need to go to the zoning board of appeals as quickly as possible to get a variance because of the fact that the road curves. I mean, I can't see them having to make a semi-circular hotel just because the road curves to keep it X number of feet closer to the road.
Yes, Mr. Stratt.
If not, is there a way that you can put a permanent structure such as a trellis and extend it out slightly if it's very narrow or whatever?
Yeah, I was thinking of a pergola or some sort of sunshade while we were talking that we could maybe add a little more definition to the building.
Right. Anything to bring it out so that you can not go before the, or we can approve it. I don't know, it's subject to...
Yeah, we can, if that's the direction of the planning commission, we can work the applicant to ensure that when they come back, they meet that thirty-foot requirement.
You want them to come back, you say?
Well, the major concern that we have in, outside of the, of the site layout and the elevations is the actual access issue. Because we have not seen anything that Magna agrees to the access point and in speak with engineering, they haven't even reviewed this yet because for circulation and access, because there's been no definition that that's actually where the location's going to be. So I would suggest we don't approve this night only on the fact of, in addition of that, we don't know where the access actually is going to be. And they might have to come back and put a secondary access point parallel to the Hampton Inn location itself off of Wilshire.
I would like to see if we could get it approved if we get, show that. And if we can't, we come back with the other access.
I'm not sure if I understand what you're...
So approved contingent that we bring and documentation that we can access through Magna's property. If not, we need to come back with our new road alignments.
That's a different site plan.
I don't know. Mr. Zastny, is that, I mean, because it's really going to modify the site plan.
You could do approval subject to conditions and if the conditions aren't met, then there's no approval. I mean, you have that authority to do that.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
I would prefer to see the package come back complete with the decision as to whether they're within the twelve, if the building's twelve feet closer to Wilshire or not and the accesses as they are actually going to be built and the elevations that we saw today as part of the proposal instead of just drawings that we're seeing tonight. As everyone knows, I have a problem approving things that the site plan isn't all complete.
Yes, Mr. Evans?
I totally agree with Mr. Schultz. I think it's bad form and process to approve something if you don't have a complete package. I do applaud you for all the other materials too. I think they look really, really great, but I have one other question if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
For the planning consultant, are you okay or what was the, the primary reason that you wanted the two buildings reversed in location?
The primary reason was because of the, the attention to detail and material use for the Hilton is a, Hilton Garden is typically a more high, higher quality hotel. And because the location on Wilshire is more visible than the back of the site, we felt that the higher product hotel should be fronting Wilshire and the Hampton, which is less quality materials and details, should be further back in the site.
And closer to I-75.
And closer to I-75. We were more concerned about the relationship to Big Beaver, relationship to Wilshire than we are the relationship to I-75.
In my opinion, that's a valid point. And I guess I haven't heard from the applicant the justification for the location that you're proposing.
Well, as you can see, the Hampton Inn and then the Hilton Garden Inn. Hilton Garden Inn has a really pronounced front piece with a pavilion and there's, there's actually a huge extension out in front of what would be a very linear hotel. If I place that up against Wilshire, I'm using up most of the property just to get it up on Wilshire and I won't be able to put the other hotel on there. We did take a look at this. We tried adjusting them and turning them. It just, it didn't work. Matter of fact, they were almost back to back. The problem is if I, then again, if I flip that hotel, the, the worst thing about this hotel is it's backed in. Because there is no, it's a service corridor, you know, the kitchen area, things like that. And it's, it's almost perfect the way it sits in here right now and it's got a, a good presence off of Wilshire. This one allowed me to put a lot more fenestration in, a lot more activity on the street. And I have a through access to it where that lobby goes from one side to the other where this one does not. This lobby stops right under the pavilion, so you can't actually walk through the building.
And those were the primary reasons why we...
Yes, Mr. Evans, go ahead.
Which one will have the greater number of vehicles going in it? Is it?
The Hampton.
The Hampton. So that's another reason for putting it closer to Wilshire perhaps.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers, could you go over the materials again on that Hampton Inn? Primarily the materials like on the, on the Wilshire side.
The rear elevation.
They're all very similar, but the, the rear elevation, this is the stone around the columns in the entrance way would be this material. This would be the cornice at the top of the, the entrance way. The glass would be glass and aluminum storefront type. This bottom row is the, the rock face, a precast more like a limestone band at the top of it. And then at the piers, we angulate up and down, so we break that, that long monotonous bar that they have. Like if you look at a typical Hampton, it looks like a cake. It's just layered with different colors. Then up in each one of these projected pediments that we have, I bring the brick up inside there all the way up to the top. And all the columns are brick all the way up to the top. And again, we have some precast accent points. And then at the very top, the last, the last story, we have two colors of ephes, the lightest being on the top and it's a cornice and the darker being just below where the windows are.
Is that a, in the lower left-hand corner of your sample board, is that a split-face masonry?
Yes.
And where'd that, where's that going?
At the bottom.
Oh, it's not the ledge stone?
Yeah. No, it's not that stone.
Where's the ledge stone going?
Ledge stone goes up these columns and all around the entrance ways right here on both sides. Or so... It is right here. So all these columns and then against the wall of the entrance.
Any other questions, Mr. Prin?
Yeah, just, I want to applaud you for bringing this development to Troy first of all. But I would like to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Hudson said. Architecturally, it's pretty bland. It reminds me of row housing as far as all those long, you know, the horizontal look with all the windows. I've looked at, I can't remember specifically the Hilton in Dubai, but I do remember the Westin. And that's stunning. This doesn't look stunning. Here, here's what I'm, the reason I'm driving it that way is this. The next exit up Big Beaver, we just saw at our last meeting, another hotel retail complex to be developed. And it was outstanding. It was exciting. A lot of pedestrian activity. They had pedestrian gathering places. They utilized, I can't remember, it was a fire and ice thing. They were talking about a giant fountain of flame or ice in the wintertime and, you know, things that made it look exciting, like, oh, I want to go there just because I want, you know, it's worth to be on that property just to see what they offer. I don't see a lot of creative landscaping. You know, there's a nice little row of trees, but nothing really creative. I'd like to see something that would be in competition with, with the next exit. Because, you know, if I had a decision to make as a person finding a hotel in Troy and they're both on I-75 at two different exits, mile and a half or so apart, I don't know if I'd choose this one as a, you know, place to stay as much as the other one. It was much more exciting. So I'm just looking for better connection, better pedestrian activities and you've got a connection, but it's just so linear and so boring. I'd like to see something exciting, be it with plant matter, with sculpture, with fountains, something that draws people. This is, this is, this is the intersection, I-75 and Big Beaver. I mean, that is like the intersection of Troy. And it just seems like we should put something there that's a little more prominent than this row housing thing. You know, I'm not going to degrade it down to the point where I'm saying I've seen in New York similar project homes, you know, for underprivileged people, but it kind of gives me that feeling, you know, just like a, just a row of windows. And you've added different materials which are better than I've seen in New York with just solid brick. But I, again, I'm piggybacking on what Mr. Hudson said. I would like to see something a little more, some more architectural detail, something that looks fun and exciting. And I know you've got restrictions, but I can't, like I say, have you looked at the Hilton Inn in Dubai? Did anybody, I didn't, I can't recall it off the top of my head.
I think I've seen it.
Is it, is it more stunning than this or not?
Oh, yeah. It's a different.
It's a different hotel.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just throwing that out there, but, you know, I real, okay, you're not going to duplicate that, but like I said, what Mr. Hudson said, there were other examples around the country here of, of Hiltons that looked a little more exciting visually than, than this. And I just thought maybe, I realize there's budgets, I realize there's a marketplace, but then again, this, there is a marketplace here. We've got competition at the next exit and I want to see at least equal appearance to that. I don't know if you've seen that or not.
Yeah, is that the one that Sharok, who did that one?
Oh, this, this...
It's an independent.
It's...
Was it on Jesus?
It was presented to us at our last meeting. You can look at the photo, the images online, I'm sure, but I just was, we were all excited about that development. They're redoing the Met Hotel, they're gutting it, completely redoing it, convention center plus a street, a pedestrian street of shops, probably, it looked like, I'm guessing, around ten stores. Just, and it had public activities there. We're going to have an ice rink, so there's winter skating and, you know, I realize you may not go to that level in this situation, but that's your competition.
I think when we come back and definitely up the pedestrian and the landscaping, we're going to have a few issues with Hilton in terms of the architecture. And at one point in time, I mean, the more I dress up the Hampton, they're going to say switch it to a different type because it exceeds the level that you're allowed to charge.
I understand, right. I understand there's budgets involved. One other quick point, I love grand entrances. This appears like we're coming up the back road and coming into it. It just, I would have preferred to see something exciting visually, maybe not because you can't see it from Big Beaver, but at least when, once you get onto Wilshire, it should look like, oh, we've arrived. That's the kind of feeling I'd like. And maybe, you know, I'd, I'd love to see a grand entrance that would split between the two hotels. You know, something maybe with an archway, some architectural details that say, again, I've arrived at a special place. That's all. Let's do that.
Mr. Stratt?
The only comment I'd make and piggyback on what Tom's comments were is that you might, just suggestion is to possibly give some additional, let me get my, I lost it. Oh, here it is. If you could actually, the, the spine or the connecting link between the two structures between, I'm talking about the strip center and the center inn and the spine that you have there, if you can possibly improve a little more of the quality there that Tom is talking about, maybe his sculpture or maybe, I know that you brought that sculpture in when you came in with the first phase and if something could be done along there to actually connect the two with a little more drama.
We are planning a follow-in in larger areas.
Well, that's what you should be showing us and that's in order for him to understand what it's talking about. But that, to me, that spine, if you play that up really well, that, that would help an awful lot in terms of what Tom was talking about, in my opinion. But again, this is, every architect has their own...
No, I'll bring up the demographics of what that pedestrian...
I think maybe if you showed us some of the things that you're planning on doing with that spine, it would help.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz?
I know we take great pride in our Big Beaver corridor, but I think we have to stay focused on the fact that we are in fact a suburban corridor. We're not downtown Chicago, we're not downtown Dallas, we're not Dubai. And this is not a Hilton or a Conrad Hotel. We're talking about a Hilton Garden Inn and a Hampton Inn, which are mid to affordable price hotels. And I think what this architect has done with what could be very, very unattractive buildings is a grand step up from what they could have basically proposed. I think the, the buildings positioned as they are makes for a very nice hotel campus. And let's face it, folks, it's right next to an interstate. So we're, we're not going to get maybe the grandest architecture in the world directly next to an interstate exit ramp. I think it's, I think it's a fine development and I look forward to when they come back with the complete package and we've solved the twelve-foot problem with the Hampton Inn so that we can move this forward and approve it.
Mr. Shafkey?
Yes, I had several questions when I went over the prints on the computer. And I think, I think you've answered most of the questions on the setback, the shared road. Design consistency is one of the most important things and I think you've, you've addressed that fairly well with you. You're doing the best you can. And so the design consistency between Phase One and Phase Two, that's important. Now, I noticed in the parking spaces also, there was just, just enough that's required without any restaurants. There's going to be no restaurants or restaurant capability in these hotels. Is that correct?
There's a restaurant in the Hilton Garden Inn, but for the Hilton Garden Inn, they'll have a little bit of...
Mind if the microphone, please, pick that up on the recording?
There, there is a restaurant in the Hilton Garden Inn, but it's for customers. Just the same as the Hampton Inn has a seating area for continental type breakfast.
Okay.
They're, they're not going outside to attract others.
Not a major sit-down type of eating area?
Right.
Okay, well, that's, you know, another thing I thought I said in the prints, there were some considerations about the trash enclosures and I didn't know what that meant in moving them or in the way they were, the facade on them or...
I'm not quite sure. And if I didn't address that one right, I apologize, but the Hilton Garden Inn is directly attached inside the building. It does have an open roof for it to ventilate. The Hampton Inn is down on the north side and it'd be surrounded by brick and an enclosure back over here in this corner.
Yeah, I just didn't know what was, said it was under consideration on the...
We've been trying to minimize the look and the position of all the dumpsters on the complete site.
You've done a good job too. You've done a good job with it.
It was difficult for the three in the front and we're trying to do just the same as with the... and we're trying to do just the same as with the two in the back.
I like it, and I think that you've done just about all you can. And I like what I see. Thank you.
Well, the only thing I'd like to add to the comments, I look at these two developments, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and they look like two developments, Phase 1 and Phase 2. I think Tom started to allude to this and maybe, what were the two Toms? About the integration. I mean, there's such a break, a demarcation between these two developments. I was just wondering if those could be blended. That line could be softened between those two developments. And again, I don't know. I do see you've got a pedestrian way that gets me from either hotel down to the retail and restaurants on Big Beaver. And I can't tell from these drawings what scale of width that walkway is or that greenbelt is. But it just seems like I'm walking through a lot of asphalt parking to get there. And if there's, it could be some way to soften that and maybe to, again, I know that, I want to know that one project's under construction now, so we may have some limitations as to what we can do. But, you know, that would be a comment. And then the other, the other thought I was having as we were talking about this dumpster at the north end, it just so happens to be on the north elevation, which is the prominent elevation everybody on Wilshire is going to see. Maybe if that could be somehow integrated, if you come back with some type of screen wall or pergola to capture that last 12 feet to make it part of the building so we don't have the setback issue, if maybe somehow, again, that could be integrated in a form that it kind of, it blends away, you know, and kind of blends in with the rest of that. Any other comments, questions for the petitioner? All right, do we, I guess we do not have to have a date certain if we're going to... Do we have to postpone this then until they come back or just...
You don't need a date certain.
Okay.
We can have a date certain, but...
No, I certainly leave that up to them.
It didn't require notification, so we can, we'll reschedule them when they submit revised plans.
We'll just take no action tonight?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, we'll move on to the other business, public comments for items on the agenda. Seeing no one, move to planning commissioner comments. Kathy, do you have anything tonight?
I don't, thank you.
Frank? Okay, Mr. Sanzika? Good? Mr. Edmonds?
No problem.
Shevki?
Uh, no comments.
Mr. Schultz?
No.
Mr. Strath?
No comment.
Prin? Stradson?
No.
Nothing? Mr. Satley, nothing? All right, meeting adjourned.